Good morning, Birmingham. Good morning, councilors. I call to order the regular council meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is November 30th, 2021. We'll have our invocation by Councilor Moore, and I'll lead the pledge of allegiance. So if you could please stand. Thank you.
If you all bow your heads, please. Father God, we just come before you today just thanking you, thanking you for this great and awesome opportunity to be here, Father God. We thank you that we will see your goodness in the land of the living. We just thank you, Father God, because you said in your word that if any man lacks wisdom, that he should ask of God, who will give it to him generously without finding fault. We come to you today, Father God, asking you for wisdom, asking you that you will continue to allow your Holy Spirit to lead and guide us into all truth, Father God. We thank you that we are able to lead with integrity, with character, and, Father God, that you help us to implement plans that will benefit the city and improve the quality of life for each and every person that it affects. And so, God, we just thank you, Father God, for a productive meeting on today. We thank you, Father God, for a safe city, Father God, and we thank you that each and every person finds their place to contribute and that we all find purpose in our everyday lives, Father God. So we just thank you. We praise you and we love you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilor. Full prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Thank you.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Present. Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. President Protem Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. And Council President Alexander.
Good morning. Thank you very much. The minutes are not ready for June 15th, 2021, to November 20th, 2021. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any communications today?
Morning, Madam President. Morning to the entire City Council. I hope you all enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday with your family. Madam President and Council, I have a few notes. I'm going to zoom through them. The first one is related to this upcoming Sunday, December 5th, where I'll have a chance to be with the nine of you all, and I hope the community comes out and be with us as well. And as it relates to, as it relates to as we continue the holiday season, I'm hoping the community can join, join us this Sunday for the city's holiday extravaganza right here in front of City Hall. There'll be vendors in Lynn Park, food trucks, free concerts, and the lighting of the Christmas tree and the menorah. Everything starts at 1:00 p.m. The holiday lightings will be at 6:00 p.m. And for more information for you all to share with the citizens and residents in your individual districts, you can have people visit birminghamal.gov/holiday. But I hope to see everybody this upcoming Sunday for the Christmas tree and menorah lighting. In addition to that, the Birmingham Museum of Art will host several activities that same day, including free hot chocolate, free holiday treats, extended hours from 12:00 to 8:00 p.m. in holiday shopping, and 25% off for city employees at the store gift shop. Second note, Madam President and Council, is the city of Birmingham is honored to collaborate with and partner with several community organizations to bring awareness to World AIDS Day, which will be tomorrow, December 1st, right here in front of City Hall, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Again, that's World AIDS Day, which will be tomorrow, right here in front of City Hall, from 11:00 to 2:00. Organizations will be offering free HIV testing, free COVID testing, free COVID booster shots, free COVID vaccinations, as well as some small entertainment that includes music and food trucks. This Thursday, which I think we also get excited about, the Birmingham City Schools will present the 82nd, 82 years now, the 82nd Annual Christmas Music Festival, December, December 2nd, at 7:00 p.m. at the Bowwell. Admission is free, and the theme this year is "Sold for Christmas." This is when all of us have the opportunity to watch our talented K-12, well, actually pre, pre-K-12 children participate in a music choral festival, and it's open to the public. And I hope you all can attend and support our children. Two more notes. The Birmingham Police Department is accepting donations for its Christmas toy and coat drive. Again, BPD is accepting donations for its Christmas toys and coat drive now through December 10th. Donations may be made at the police precincts, as well as the city jail, as well as police headquarters. And for more information, citizens can call 205-933-4175. Again, that's 205-933-4175. And the last note, starting tomorrow, December 1st, and will extend to December 3rd, the Super Seven State High School Football Playoffs will take place in our city. The games will be played at Protective Stadium. And for more information, you can visit ahsaa.com/sports/football. But the Super Seven State High School Football Playoffs will take place starting tomorrow. Unfortunately, Madam President and Council, none of our schools are in, but we do have some surrounding schools in the area that will be participating. With that, Madam President and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate that.
Good man.
And as you said, we wish all those teams good luck, even though we don't have any from Birmingham City Schools. We know how important sports are to our youth and to the families, so we wish each of those teams good luck. Yes, ma'am. Madam Protem.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Whitford, I was on a neighborhood meeting call yesterday with Woodland Park, and they, we have, I have a folder for you for these complaints they've submitted, and they have tracking numbers. If you could please have code enforcement go out there and look at these complaints, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Protem. Thank you, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the, call the consent items, please, or the items on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Give me one second. I think we're trying to get the gronicas back up and running. And... Okay, now it's up and running. All right. The consent agenda begins on page two with items two, three, and four. Page three with items five, six, and eight. On page four, items 10 and 11. On page five, items 14, 15, 16, and 17. On page six, items 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22. On page seven, items 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27. Page eight, items 28, 29, 30, 31, 32. And on page nine, items 33, 34, 35, and 36. And that completes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't see any requests to speak. I do believe in pre-council meeting, there was going to be a request to pull two items off the agenda. That's item seven and nine. Is that correct, Councilor Tate?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I don't see any requests to speak this time. Any items you need to pull or add? All right, let me read the...
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
The items seven and nine are not on consent.
That's correct, but they're going to be pulled from the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, though. All right. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public meeting so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. All matters of permanent operation, indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Do we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So may I?
Second.
The vote has started.
Thank you.
Counselors Tate?
Last one coming up, but, yes.
We'll get some assistance with these iPads. Thank you. That motion passes. Thank you. So anyone that's here to, here for any of the consent items, those items have been approved, and so your item has been approved, and we'll continue with the rest of the meeting. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you'll start us off with the first item.
The first item is on page two, item number one. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC 2021-00005, to change zone district boundaries from D3 Single Family District to AG Agriculture District filed by Willie Casey, representing the owner, Samuel Thompson Jr., for property located at 2812 Balsam Avenue Southwest and situated in the northwest quarter of Section 20, Township 18 South Range 3 West, and this is the hearing of our interested parties.
Thank you very much, and Mrs. Abbott will conduct this hearing. Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
Thank you very much. The one thing I'd like to say before Mr. Gambrell reads our case is that the reason for the no recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Committee is not because of indecisiveness, it's because only one person was in attendance, so there was no vote, just in case you were wondering.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Gambrell?
I'm sorry. Could you get a motion so we can have the item properly before? All right, thank you.
And now, thank you.
Now, so, Mr. Gambrell, would you read our case, please?
Certainly. Good morning. Tim Gambrell, I serve as Chief Planner at the City of Birmingham. This is case ZAC 2021-5 in Jones Valley. It's an application for a change in zone district boundaries from D3 Single Family District to AG Agriculture District filed by Willie Casey, representing the owner, Samuel L. Thompson Jr., for the property located at 2812 Balsam Avenue Southwest, situated in the northwest quarter of Section 20, Township 18 South Range 3 West, and that is located in District 7. The proposed use is outdoor farming for a chicken coop, barn, kennel, fishing pond, and community garden. The subject property sits on approximately 4.8 acres of land currently Zone D3, abutting the subject property to the north. North is Zone D3 Single Family District. To the east of the property is Zone CI2 for Heavy Manufacturing District. Properties to the south and west of the site are Zone D3. The applicant is proposing outdoor farming accessory to an existing single-family home. Their private home will have a chicken coop, the private farm will have a chicken coop, community garden where fruits and vegetables will be grown, and a kennel. There's also existing pond on the property where catfish will be kept. The property currently has a barn, and there's a creek that runs through the property. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as residential low, therefore the proposed rezoning request is not consistent with the long-range land use plan. The applicant's site plan shows an existing pond and barn already on the property. The development must meet all landscaping requirements outlined in the city's zoning arts, including perimeter landscaping as well as interior and buffer requirements. Likewise, this use in the AG District for the chicken coop, the livestock barn, and the animal kennel have special setback requirements and other conditions that apply to handling waste and the like. The proposed greenhouse must meet accessory structure requirements as well. This property is in the 100-year floodplain, and therefore all related activities must meet all floodplain requirements. The city's natural hazard administrator reviewed the applicant's proposal and offered some conditions for their approval. The neighborhood recommendation, Jones Valley Neighborhood Association met at a regular scheduled meeting on Friday, April 2nd, 2021, to review the proposed project, voted to continue their request to allow for more discussion. The Jones Valley Neighborhood Association met again in a regular scheduled meeting on Friday, May 7, 2021, and voted not to support the zoning request. Their vote was zero to approve and five to deny. Reasons given for not supporting the request were possible noise, smell, community safety, proximity to a school park and library, as well as traffic going in and out. The President of the Redevelopment Subcommittee of the Southwest Birmingham Framework Plan Implementation Committee informed staff that the neighborhood should decide on their rezoning request. The staff recommendation is stated previously that it's not consistent with the future land use plan, therefore is not recommended. The zoning advisory committee met at its regular scheduled meeting on June 1, 2021, and voted not to recommend. As stated, the Planning and Zoning Committee met on October 21, 2021, a special called meeting, and forwarded the request to the City Council with no recommendation due to lack of a quorum. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Please come forward, and remember that our microphone is weak, and you have to speak right into it.
Asked some pitches out, and also the petition that...
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Good morning. My name is Willie A. Casey, R.W.A. Casey. I'm a real estate broker for Casey Bishop and Burrows Realty, located at 2834 Bessemer Road.
Mr. Casey, can you speak louder?
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Good morning. My name is Willie A. Casey, R.W.A. Casey. I am a real estate broker for Casey Bishop and Burrows Realty, located at 2834 Bessemer Road, 35208. I want to ask, I want to say congratulations to all the city councilmen, the mayor, for getting re-elected or elected. May God bless all of you, and you continue to move the city forward. I come before you representing Mr. Samuel L. Thomas Jr., who owns, who lives at 1412 Pineview Road, but he is the owner of a mini-farm located at 2812 Balsam Avenue Southwest, 35211. I am the exclusive real estate agent for the record for he, who, he have owned this farm. For information, for my bow, I am a former member of the Birmingham Planning Commission. I'm a former real estate appraiser. I am currently chairman of the Industrial Development Board for Birmingham for the last, what, 30 years, 30-plus years. I'm instructor and owner of Birmingham Garrett Real Estate School for the last 20 years. I've had, I've been a real estate for, full-time broker for the last 40 years. Mr. Thomas's property consists of 4.8 acres. It is Zone R3, far back as 1935. The record, the record shows, we are asking for you to grandfather clause this property in as agriculture. We have a petition signed by residents. Mr. Thompson and I talked to nine out of 12 other residents. They live on, live on the dead-end street. They have no problem with this. The five members in the community that voted against it, some didn't know the property located in that area. So they have, but behind the, behind the, this property located behind the gas, gas tanks in the west end. In my estimation, the property needs about $75,000 to $250,000 in immediate improvements on the property. Mr. Samuel L. Thompson Jr. has put most of his life savings in this property, which he, when he bought this property, it had cows, chickens, and cornfields. This property does not have, this property does have some redeeming values. I showed this property to Mrs. Alex Wesley of Youth Towers and Mr. Frank Adams of AG Gasts and Boys Club when he was there. Both of them said it has some redeeming values for their program, their zone for agriculture. And also, all the potential investors who have looked at the property have said the same thing. They will only buy the property if it would be rezoned. We're asking you, please, help save this treasure, piece of land, as a mini-farm. Our grandfather clause in it in under the zoning. I want to thank Council President Wardell Alexander and Councilman Carol Clark for taking time out of their busy day to visit the property. We have a citizen here and also have potential purchaser here that wanted to speak to you all about the property.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. This is a public hearing, and we want to hear from not only the applicant's representative, but any speakers who wish to speak. So if there are any people in the audience who would like to speak regarding this issue, if you would come forward at this time, and, Mr. Casey, if you'd just sit on the front row, because I'm sure we'll have questions for you.
Thank you.
My name is Lee McCauley. I am an interested purchaser in the property. I am a recent, I've recently relocated to the Birmingham area from West Bloomfield, Michigan. I actually got stuck here during COVID because my state shut down, and I've realized what a gem you have in this state. I have invested in this state. I have redeveloped properties. I have had meetings in the zoning office and also in community development concerning the redevelopment, concerning the development of tiny houses. I am currently in discussions with brokers who broker the Board of Education Properties for Adaptive Reuse for school board buildings. I am an urban planner by trade. I have a, I have a Bachelor of Science degree in Information Systems and have a Master's degree in Urban Planning and Economic Development. So when we talk about setback requirements, when we talk about land use requirements, I am capable of meeting the needs that are required by this honorable body. I am, I have, my real estate agent has submitted an offer on this property, and I am, the offer has not been accepted yet, but I want to stand here to support the zoning, rezoning of that property to agriculture. And I'm so sorry that I'm a little nervous. I, I've worked for the city, for the Detroit City Planning Commission. I've worked for the city of Cincinnati's Planning Department and Historic Preservation Department, and also worked for the city of Dayton as well, in Oakland County. So I should not be nervous, but I am, because it's been a long time since I have presented before an honorable body.
Don't worry. We can't get at you through that plastic.
Well, I am glad to know that. So I, I have actually went over and looked at that property, and it is an amazing piece of land. I have, what I do in my past, in my, as my passion, is nutrition. I've written a book called Taking Every Bite Seriously. It is the power of food as medicine to reverse chronic disease. I am a survivor of breast cancer, so I know the power of food, and I want to use...
Take your time. It's okay.
And I want to use that property to put greenhouses on it. I want to use that property to grow sustainable food. I want to use that property to allow people who want to partake of these greenhouses and who don't want to partake of food that is replete with chemicals and that are primarily responsible for diminishing health. So I ask this honorable body today to consider the approval. Perhaps, you know, the approval may not be consistent with master planning proposals for the specific area, but again, as I said, I am capable, as an urban planner, to make, to meet the requirements of this honorable body and of the city as well. I do apologize for the emotion, but when I talk about being a breast cancer survivor, and when I talk about the need for us to change our diets to a plant-based diet, I mean it with my entire being. So again, thank you for this time before you. I hope that you will consider rezoning this property from D3 to agriculture, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley. The only thing you didn't tell us was your address.
The address? I have a local address.
That's the one we want.
Many locals, many local addresses, 2513 31st Street, Southwest.
Ms. Abbott, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Ma'am, I'm confused. Are you, are you, are you the purchaser of this property with this gentleman here?
No. What has happened recently is that, you know, I recently submitted an offer on the property. There were no offers on the property at that time, and my offer has not been accepted yet because I was told that there would be no acceptance until after this hearing. And so I literally begged for an opportunity to appear before you today so that I could have the opportunity to let you know that I am a capable urban planner. I am no novice. I am no beginner. I always say, "Google me," you know? That's a joke, guys, but, yeah, so I'm capable of doing what is required to sustain the zoning classification.
Okay. So you want the property rezoned?
Me?
Or you don't want it rezoned?
She wants it rezoned.
Oh, you want it rezoned?
I want to support the rezoning, yes.
All right. Sorry. Yeah, it wasn't clear. Thank you.
May I?
Are there any other questions?
Yes.
I have a question of Ms. McCauley. So you support the rezoning, but it could be rezoned, and that could make it, you know, more valuable or increase the competition. You don't have a, you don't have a right to purchase the property, but you're very passionate about acquiring the property, so...
I am, I am very aware of the competition on this property. I am not happy about it because none of that competition appeared before I made my offer.
So, so my other question to you, as I, as I saw the property, you know, it has the tank farms and the railroad track immediately adjacent. So have you, are you concerned about any air quality issues with that location and the proximity to the petroleum tanks?
I am certainly concerned about that, and I am initially, if I am allowed to acquire that property, I'm immediately going to reach out to Auburn University and ask them to test the groundwater and to test what's happening in the soil. If it is contaminated soil, well, I have greenhouses. That's how I will compensate for...
I'm sorry. It's hard to hear.
I do apologize.
If it's contaminated soil, I don't...
If it is contaminated soil, that is why I wanted to propose a greenhouse, to have two greenhouses on the property, and those greenhouses will be covered, so it won't sustain any, any damage or any noxious interference by any type of emissions from that particular property. I am concerned about the groundwater. I am. I, I was on the property yesterday. Two of my friends actually came down from Michigan to see the property. That is, that's how serious I am about it, you know? And we were walking the property, and there was a, there was a, there was some rock, and within that rock there was water, and we did see some sort of oily emission. But I, I can't, I don't know if that was because of, you know, minerals in the rock or whether there was some sort of emission that has been released from Chevron. If that is the case, I am fully equipped to go against Chevron to make it happen. If that is the case, I am fully equipped to go against Chevron to make it happen, because if Chevron has damaged that property, they will compensate for that.
Yeah, and my thought is if, if that property's impacted, so are some of the other residences close by, possibly. And so it would be nice if someone could champion the remediation if there's some impacts in that area.
I will champion remediation. I am a bulldog. I will not, if they are doing anything with that property, I've been a part of environmental remediation for, and as it relates to land use in the city of Detroit, where you'd have gas stations and you'd have underground tanks that developers were refusing to remove. And so as a land use planner and an economic development planner, I have learned to be a bulldog, to fight for the citizens. I'm not only fighting for myself and the property that I want at that location, I am fighting for the, I understand that I'm fighting for the residents, you know? Because if my water's contaminated, theirs is too, and, and that's a problem. And Chevron will have to, have to, have to deal with that. I mean, that's, that's what has to happen, and I'm ready to lawyer up. I'm good, yeah.
Well, thank you. Are there any other council members who would either like to ask Mr. Casey or Ms. McCauley a question? Dr. Quinn?
I have a question for Mr. Gambrell, actually. So what in the proposed use of the property would not be allowed under the R3 zoning?
The chicken coop, livestock barn, what else did they mention?
Kennel.
Animal kennel, which, yeah, all three of those uses would not be used allowed at R3. And then depending on the volume of the activity, you know, community garden would be allowed by right, but an urban farm would not.
Okay, so I understand the kennel. I was under the impression that under our revisions to the zoning ordinance we had made for urban farming several years ago, that we had included provisions for a chicken coop, but...
That's right. That is true, but I think the difference here would be just a scale. You know, in the, in the residential district, a chicken coop or, you know, would be allowed by right in D3 zoning when it is of a certain scale. So they're limited to a certain number of animals, you know, that sort of thing. In a smaller area, you know, in an ag area, you could have a larger coop and have many more birds.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
It's really a scale issue. It's the same with the urban farm, you know, community, I mean, you can garden on your lot, you know? You can have a community garden on a single-family lot. But once you get to an urban farm, you know, which may include, you know, larger equipment, you know, just a larger production, then it becomes something different.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And to the, yes, ma'am, please. So as part of your due diligence on the property, have you, you know, looked at the environmental conditions? Have you had the soil tested already, all of those things?
No, I have not had the soil tested already. My interest in the property emerged probably, yeah, about two weeks ago.
Okay.
And, you know, I am, I am concerned certainly for that, but I'm prepared, you know, to use greenhouses. And to Mr., sorry, to Mr. Gambrell's concern about chicken coops, I'm 100% plant-based. So there will be no chickens, no goats, no horses, no edible meat on the property. There will just be green.
Okay.
Yeah, and I am, and just to speak to Mr. Casey, I sincerely hope that you will accept our offer, because we are equipped, you know, I am equipped, to make sure that that property meets the requirements of the council.
Okay, madam, the council's the one that you need to be talking with. You can talk with Mr. Casey, I assume, anytime.
No, no, I'm just, I was just telling, you know, because there is competition, you know, and it just emerged after my offer.
So do, are there any other questions or comments?
I do have questions, Ms. Abbott. I don't know, do you have another question? And I'll let Ms...
Well, so I guess I'm a little confused. So the current owner of the property is the person who has requested the rezoning, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Or the broker requested the rezoning.
So you're just speaking in support of that request because you're interested in potentially purchasing the property?
That is correct.
But it's, it's really the current owner who's making the request?
It's really the broker who is representing the current owner, who, and the broker feels that it is of optimal benefit to have it rezoned to ag. I, my, my desire to have it rezoned to ag is so that I can have a full-fledged farm. I mean, there's a quarter acre fish farm on, on that, on that lake as well, so there is, you know, which will stay, obviously, but I truly support this farm, and I, you know, and I'm coming out to support it, not having it in my possession, because they have not accepted my offer.
So is your offer on the property contingent on the rezoning request being approved?
No, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. This property does sit in my district. It's in District 7. And in support of the neighborhood, they did have questions regarding the potential long-range use of this property, as well as any admittance of odor, smell, just the, the chicken coops, the livestock, that type of thing. And then wanting to have opportunity to rebuild that neighborhood and to look at it in the ways that I think that you are presenting. This is not how the use of that property was presented originally, which is some of the concern of the neighbors. I don't see any of them here, but I did talk with the neighborhood president and was present at, know of their feelings about this property. And then looking at the different recommendations from our engineers and our planners, I guess my, just my concern is, you're speaking of the use of a property in a way that was not originally from the original applicant. And so I guess my question to Mr. Gambrell, if we don't vote today on the rezoning of this property, if there was a different applicant, could they come back for a different use of the property? Just wanted to get some clarity on that.
Right, yeah, so if you were to deny the case today, they wouldn't have an opportunity to come back, I believe, for a year. I'd have to check the text, unless the council allowed it. I'd have to check the text again about the specifics on that. But, you know, if you denied it today, they wouldn't be able to come back for a year, unless you were able to demonstrate there was some changed condition that warranted a new hearing. So, yeah, if you, but if you, if the case were pulled, or if there was no action taken today, then, you know, I think we could receive a new application that would consider, you know, a different use, a different, you know, proposal.
Or if our vote, let me just be sure I'm clear. If our vote is no, how would we go about the process if we didn't want to look at the issue today to allow another applicant to come and maybe have a different use of this property? We would have to take a no. Again, the no would mean that applicant could not come for a full year.
Yeah, that would create some difficulties for them, yeah, because they would have to, I mean, they would, you know, technically, they're not allowed to come back for a year, but I believe there is a provision that would allow the council to accept a new proposal if there was some changed condition in the case, or changed condition in the proposal.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Casey a question. What is Mr. Tho, is Mr. Thompson moving on to this property and having a chicken coop and a barn and a kennel and all this stuff? Is, is he moving on to this property, or is this a speculative request where he sees that he would get more money for his property if it was zoned agricultural?
Well, cool thing. He's owned this property for a long time. He bought this property to enjoy it for his family, but he's in, you know, an age like a lot of us are, and he wants to invest up the things that he can't, that's draining on his income. He put a lot of savings in this property. Now, the zoning we asked for is the zoning that's permitted under, the things we asked for is the zoning permitted under the zone of agriculture or urban farm inside the city. The concerns that the citizens had is unfounded. Why we have petition on, everybody that live in that area has no problem with it. The school is almost four blocks from this farm. So it's not, it's not, it's not a close impact for people, this close impact have no problem with it. They've been there all the time, when cows was there and chickens was there.
Okay, but the question is, is Mr. Thompson wanting to move on to this property and operate this as an agricultural...
Oh, I, I follow. All right, the problem is, the property needs about seventy-five to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of investment in the property. No one, including him, he don't want to put that money in the property. If he, he bought the property, he thought he was buying a farm. It had been zoned, I think, zoned R residential since 1935.
Yeah, so he shouldn't have thought he was buying a farm if it's been zoned R3 since 35.
Well, we do still, sometime in haste, in, in the excitement of getting something, we don't look at the fine details. I was not as real as that time. But I'm saying that the property has been a farm since at least 100 years, 100 years old. You see, a barn, that barn has fallen down. So it's been a farm for 100 years or better. I mean, it's, it's a stream, he invested a, you know, half-acre lake there, fish lake that's stocked with catfish, bass, and bream. It's 15 feet deep. It looks like a farm. I mean, I got two farms in Hill County.
Okay, well, that...
It looked like, I'm in Hill County.
Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with this case, but it's interesting information.
All I'm saying is that it's looked like a farm. We walked the property, it looked like a farm. It looked like a duck, a duck is a duck. I mean, it's a farm. And, and, and those, oh boy, those residents, sometime, I've been involved in community all the time, long, a long time. Sometime in the community, people will vote, not because it's a good or bad project, just because they can say no. Then, I can see no logical reason they said no.
Okay, well, we don't want to speculate on why people vote the way they vote, because that's their vote.
You've been there, you know what I'm talking about.
So anyone else who has any questions before we take a vote? Okay, I see no, no further questions. So the, the motion is to approve, and if you vote no, then we won't approve it, but I believe that it's time for us to vote.
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, I'd say one thing. Mr. Thompson has spent his life savings in this farm. It need to be zoned there to get, get his, get the money put in it, out of it, you know? And, I don't know, I, I would wish, I hope y'all, as the president, you know, you ain't got to vote unless it's a tie, but I understand your, I understand the position you in with the community. But I plead, all my real estate knowledge I have in real estate, the right thing to do, we vote this agriculture one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Thank you, Ms. Abbott. I just do have one final question, Ms. Gambrell. So if the ownership changes, can the new owner request a change of zoning within a
I would have to, I'd have to read the ordinance and verify that.
Okay.
I believe, now, I believe from my reading that if the council agrees to hear it again...
Then we'll be able to do it, all right.
They can do that, that's right.
Certainly, I think with a different owner and a different use, I mean, because we've heard different uses here.
Correct.
But we, yeah, I believe the council has the purview to hear it if we think there's a good reason.
That's accurate.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gambrell. Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
I have a question.
Madam Pro-Tim?
Has the owner signed a contract to sell it?
No, the owner, the owner has not filed a contract to sell it.
Oh, wait a minute, honestly, Mr. Casey should be...
There was, there was...
I'm sorry, Ms. McCauley.
When I presented...
Ms. McCauley, we're going to allow Mr. Casey to speak for the owner. Thank you.
Contract don't, don't market for six months. We have had numerous investors. I have another lady, same credentials she has, that's your interest in the property. I have other institutional interest in the property. The problem with the property is that, in the state it is, nobody wants to risk investing more money in the property if it's going to stay R3. If it's not rezoned, I'm very afraid you will have some deteriorating property out there, that right now, with seventy-five to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar investment, it's an uplift on the property. It will increase the property value, in my opinion.
All right, thank you.
So the answer is, what is the answer to her question? Can you just...
No, it's, it's listed, but no, no, no signed contracts. You have not agreed to, you have not agreed, it's not a working contract to go to closing, but it's on the market to sell. It's on the market to sell, it's not a contract. What are you saying? It's a, it's a binding contract, agreed price and terms of sale? The answer is that is no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Thank you. Counselors, we're ready for the vote.
One other comment, if I could.
Madam?
I can use the land at what, because of what I want to do.
Madam, we are, we are completing the vote.
We're entertaining the vote, thank you so much. We're entertaining the vote. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
The vote has started. Counselor Clark? Okay, Counselor Woods? No, okay. All right, that vote is up.
All right, thank you. That motion fails. Next item.
Okay, the next item is item number seven. It's on page three. And I'll also read...
Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Clerk, items seven and nine, we're going to entertain a motion to have those items sent back to Public Safety. So do you mean, need to go ahead and read them first?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you're going to make a motion, yes, ma'am. Item seven is a resolution relative to the application of Country Club, Inc. for a lounge retail looker class one license to be used at Country Club, 1157 Bankhead Highway West, Birmingham, in the hearing of our interested parties. And item nine is a resolution relative to the application of Maurice King for a Division One dance permit to be used at Country Club, 1157 Bankhead Highway West, Birmingham, and this is also a hearing of our interested parties.
Motion to send to Public Safety.
That was Counselor Williams, and who made the second? Oh, okay, thank you. So this is referring it back to Public Safety. Okay, the vote has started on that motion. Counselor Woods is out.
All right, thank you. That motion passes, so both of those items will be moved to the public safety committee. Next item.
Okay, the next item is item number 12. It's on page four. A resolution assenting to the vacation of 1,555 square feet of the alleyway that is located parallel to and between 23rd Street South and 22nd Street South, and perpendicular to and between Magnolia Avenue and 9th Avenue South, on behalf of Magnolia Point LLC and Algernon Blair Shree LLC owners, so that the owner can consolidate property. And this is the hearing of our interested parties, case number S U B 2021-00068.
Thank you. At this time, Counselor Smith, I'll get you to conduct the public hearing.
Okay, Ms. Kimbrell, if you want to come up?
Tim Gambrell, Service Chief Planner for the city. This is case sub 2021-68, and is a resolution to determine whether the city council will give its assent to the vacation of the following 1,555 square feet of alleyway located parallel to and between 23rd Street South and 22nd Street South, and perpendicular in to and between Magnolia Avenue and 9th Avenue South, so that the owner can consolidate property, and whether such vacation will deprive other property owners of such right as they may have egress and ingress from the property. One-third vaca, right-of-way vacation fee has been set at $6,556.91, and on October 13, 2021, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended the approval of this vacation to the full council. On October 5, 2021, the Public Improvements and Beautification Committee forward this vacation to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Are there any counselors that have any questions? Yes, Counselor Abbott?
I just have one question. I just have one question. It, it looks like this is an unopened alley. Is this an unopened alley, or is it an opened alley?
I believe that's correct. Joey, you want to handle that?
Does it go anywhere?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Counselor. I'm Joey Britner. I'm with Shoal Engineering, ten oh one Twenty-second Street South, here to represent the owner and trying to present to you a little graphic representation. The short answer to your question is, it's a ten-foot public alley, and it does not run from, it isn't open in, for vehicular traffic. I've tried to highlight the, the area that we're requesting approval for today. As Mr. Gambrell said, it's fifteen hundred and fifty-five square feet that we're going to combine it with Lot One. So, that's basically the alley, and I'll be glad to try to address other questions.
But that was really it. I just wanted to know if it was a alley that was in use by anyone driving their vehicles, garbage trucks, automobiles on it, or if it was one of our many unopened alleys that just, just a piece of property that sits there with weeds on it?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's akin to your second statement, it's unopened and, and more noxious.
And does the unopened, I mean, you're just wanting this portion that we have a picture where it's clouded in, but I assume the unopened alley extends on behind the other businesses on that street?
Yes, ma'am. It will extend north to Ninth Avenue.
But they don't, they're not buying their part. It's just-
Yes, ma'am. It's just this portion. It's approximately a hundred and fifty-eight and a half feet right through here.
Okay, thank you. That, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark.
So, is this the alley that goes behind the Vogue cleaners?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if part of the alley remains open, like behind Vogue, if someone gets back there, how will they turn around to go back out?
Well, you really can't get back there in a, with a vehicle. The alley is, is not accessible with, by vehicular traffic.
Okay, so it'll just remain a public right-of-way, but it's not passable?
That is correct.
Okay, I think that's what you had already established.
Vogue cleaners is, Ms. Clark, is directly north of this property, yes.
So now, I thought the portion that's being vacated was like a cobblestone, and it does, I don't know if anyone drives through it, but it looks open at the point at Magnolia. It looks open to me.
Trying to talk and point, this area right here, there is a turnout off of Magnolia, but other than just turning, turning out and, and maybe getting up on the sidewalk, you cannot access up through, through the alley.
Okay.
So, okay, anyone else? Any other counselors? Okay, Madam President, I call for the vote.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call for the vote, Madam Clerk. Thank you, sir.
The vote has started. Counsel, okay, great.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Next item.
The next item is item number thirteen, also on page four. An ordinance to amend Title Twelve Licensing and Regulations, Chapter Sixteen Taxi Caps and Vehicles for Hire of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, to amend Article Eight General Provisions, Section Twelve dash sixteen dash one, Definitions, Section Twelve dash sixteen dash two, Vehicle Permitting Requirements, Section Twelve sixteen four, Display of Information on Body of Vehicles, Section Twelve dash sixteen dash five, Vehicle Insurance, Section Twelve dash sixteen dash six, Vehicle Inspection, Section Twelve dash sixteen dash seven, Taximeters, Section Twelve dash sixteen dash eight, Rates of Fair, Section Twelve dash sixteen dash eleven, Application for Operating Authority Permit, Section Twelve dash sixteen dash thirty-one, Investigation of Applicant, to further provide for the regulation of vehicles for hire. And this is the item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent to first take this item up.
Motion for unanimous consent?
Second.
All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Now, you need a motion on the actual.
Move the item.
Second.
Thank you. I don't see anyone request to speak. Any other counselors have any questions?
Can I just ask one little question?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott.
So, I'm looking at the, at the difference in language, and I can't find any except the word sedan. Is that all that changed? Because I, and you know, it's crossed out, but we've crossed out things which are put right back in again. So is it just that we added sedan to the list of types of vehicles?
Attorney Bernard or Attorney King, could we just get a clarification on that? Thank you.
Attorney Bernard, please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Julie Bernard with Office of City Attorney. I am not sure what version you're looking at, Counselor Abbott, because there are strikes and underlines throughout the document.
Well, yeah, there's this-
There's multiple changes.
Okay, well, I was looking at page six.
Okay.
And everything that's crossed out is the same, except we seem to have added the word sedan, and I just wondered if-
Okay, what, I'd say, you're, you're asking about the non-emergency medical services. There were some questions that were, there were some changes that were requested when I addressed, and that, one of it was adding, um, that sedan, but there were two, if you see, there is above it, there's a definition for non-emergency medical transport service, and then there was a, and actually, I may have them out at order alphabetically, but there was, below it, there was a definition for medical transport service that were virtually the same thing. There were slight differences, but it was, um, you know, they were addressed differently, but it was, they were duplicates, they were talking about the same thing, so I merged those two definitions together. So if you look above it, what struck, and actually, I'm looking at it, I probably, I put it in the place where medical transport service was alphabetically, but, um, where that struck, that was originally a definition by itself, so I merged the two.
Okay, well, maybe the-
And then the only change to it was to add the word sedan, but I merged the two definitions so we didn't have two duplicate definitions.
Okay, well, the document we have doesn't show that, but it's okay. I just wanted to know if sedan was the only thing that changed, and apparently it is.
That's, that's the only, as far as the definition of non-emergency medical transport service, that's the only thing that changed, other than I tried to merge the two definitions together, because there was no sense in having a definition for non-emergency medical transport service, and then one that was medical transport service that were really for the same purpose.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Williams, are you good?
I, I do have a question for Attorney Bernard. So, we're still going to be requiring a permitting process for medical transport or non-emergency medical transport. We've just merged the definition, right?
Right, we've, yeah, we've merged those definitions. I, I will say, the other change with this, related to it, the taxi industry is asking to take out that they don't have to, that they cannot operate as a non-emergency transport service. Probably the reality is, and there's, there's a difference, I want to clarify, there's kind of two ways that there's non-emergency medical transport. We have a separate ordinance that addresses ambulances. Under that ordinance, Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service is the only ambulance service that can respond to an emergency within the city of Birmingham. So all the private ambulance companies that are out there, they don't respond to emergency calls. Only BFRS responds to those calls. The private ambulance companies do non-emergency transport where, say, like transfer from hospital to hospital, nursing home to hospital, hospital to nursing home, or rehab. And ambulances are required where the patient is recumbent, you know, where they have to be transported in prone state, or, you know, require some kind of medical support during the course of the transport. These vehicles, the non-emergency transport service that's in this ordinance, are services that take people to doctor's appointments, to routine procedures like dialysis, or, you know, something like that. You know, of course, if somebody's coming from a nursing home to somewhere to get dialysis, and they would likely be transported in an ambulance. It is a little bit confusing, because they are two separate, yet related issues. And the reality, as I kind of look at it, is if I need to go to a doctor's appointment, and I don't have transportation, you know, I don't have a personal vehicle, then I can call a TNC, I can call a taxi, I can get on a bus, I can do, there's multiple ways I can get to a doctor's appointment. The city having CPNC, and I will say, most of the CPNCs that this council has approved in probably the past year have been non-emergency transport services. And those have usually been people, as I've heard them come up here, they may have a nursing background, you know, they may have different issues, why they, you know, feel called to do that particular service. And so if somebody wants a service that's dedicated to that, it exists. But, again, if I call up and ask somebody to take me to an address, um, you know, and I just need to go to a doctor's appointment, that's not necessarily going to be visible to the company or to the regulator, you know? If I call and say, I need to go to South Side, and then I get in the taxi and give the exact address, and it's, you know, professional building, you know, do they say, no, I can't take you there? I think there's the reality of that.
So that's, in essence, what the change in this ordinance is about? Has there been a problem? Has there been a problem with this?
No, um, I would like to, I think-
It's fine, I just was wondering, it's just so in the weeds, if there's been an issue or not.
It, it's not, it's not a problem. The, I will say, the goal I, um, is, of this is, is updating, modernizing some of the operations to the way that the industry operates. Now, there's a lot of changes, you know, there are other people who can maybe speak to some questions if you have them, but the, the primary thing is, this opens the city up to more modern operations of taxis, and, and that, that's the goal here.
I'm going to allow, I know Mr. Dr. Quinn wants to speak here on behalf of the Transportation Committee, but I'm going to say that as a caregiver, in the past, of parents who had to go and be transported at times, as we look at the future, and we know what the needs are of our populace as we're all aging, this is a consideration that I see that we're taking on as we move forward. But Dr. Quinn?
Thank you. So, Attorney Bernard, this is something that we did discuss in Transportation Committee, and, and at the time, we talked about Medicare billing, and Yellow Cab, as I recall, Yellow Cab is currently a service that, um, the, the Medicare program allows people to, to utilize, is that correct?
I believe that's my understanding. Mr. Ellis Houston, who's the owner of Yellow Cab, is here, if you would like to have him address that question.
Sure. So, Mr. Houston, if you would, but in the meantime, while he comes to the podium, it was my understanding that this was more of a technicality to eliminate any question about whether Yellow Cab could actually provide the service. So, you know, it, to my understanding, um, you know, Medicare wouldn't be, wouldn't be confused by the ordinance and say, well, you know, technically, you're not allowed to provide this service in the city of Birmingham, therefore, you can't bill us, you know, for providing that transport. Mr. Ellis is, is that, Mr. Houston, is that accurate?
Uh, my name's Ellis Houston, address fifty-eight oh four Porton Madrid Boulevard South. We've been doing Medicaid and Medicare for over twenty years, and as part of cleaning up the ordinance, is just to get it to where it is, just like there's one section in there that requires us to operate a mechanical meter. We haven't operated a mechanical meter since the seventies. So we're, we're just, as we go through certain segments, we're just making them real, in the real world. And as far as the medical transport stuff, I probably have ten accounts with UAB. We've been moving those people, take people to dialysis. And as far as, I know there was a little discussion about that a minute ago, about the, the medical transport part, we've been doing that forever. It just wasn't in the ordinance, allowing us to do it.
Right.
So with this, uh, again, as we went through it, and we just got a little more detail, we need to fix this, we need to fix this, we need to fix this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. With no other questions, then we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
The vote has started.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item passes. Do we have any other items to consider?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. We having no old or new business. I did not get any requests for presentations. Um, Mr. Quinn, I'm not at that point yet. Thank you, though. Okay, at this time, we will have requests or presentations from the public. Before we call our speakers, I would like to ask that we remember that we do have a city code and ordinance that directs the decorum when you come and speak before the city council, and it includes that any person not a member of the council making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous while the city council is in session, shall be forthwith by the preceding officer barred from the audience. There's a decorum that we're asking, that everyone, when you come before us to speak, we are here, we want to listen to you, we want to hear what you, the information that you want to share with the council. But I do ask you that when you come before the dais, keep in mind, we're allowing you three minutes to speak, and we do ask you to stay within those guidelines. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the first speaker?
Yes, ma'am. The first speaker is Demetrius Nix.
Give us your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Demetrius Nix. I'm from Niagara Falls, New York. My address is three thirty-eight Fourteenth Street. I have a movement called We All We Got. It's a black empowerment movement. I started it in New York, and I'm bringing it here. Normally, I don't go to city councils. I'm different than any other movement you've probably ever seen. I'm not here to ask for no money. We will never ask for no money. I'm about going within, in our community, going back within our own cocoon to become our butterfly, for us to face the one crime that is facing America, the worst crime that is facing America is black-on-black crime, us killing ourselves and us destroying our own communities. I don't think we need to go outside for help, but what I would like to ask the city council is jobs, um, opportunities. When she said to the guy, when, um, he said that, you know, he didn't know that he wasn't purchasing a farm, we don't have that education. We don't have them opportunities, which is the reason why we can't get into the business field, and we don't have a chance to go for it. In my community, I opened a thing called Entrepreneur School. It's a dot, um, community center, because everybody want to focus on the kids, but I feel like if we take the kids for two hours, and we send them back home to a messed-up environment for twenty-two hours, we leading them wrong. So what we do is, we go after the parents, we fix the home of the parents, and we get the community to come together, and we ask for no government help, no help from the government. But what we do ask is that, we are very unorthodox, and when y'all see us start growing, y'all might not understand how the unreachable is finally waking up, that y'all just, please, just stay out our way and let us push forward, and help us in any way that y'all can from the outside, but we're not going to come and ask for help. It's finally time that we understand justice come from us, justice come from within, and we must bring down the crime. This is where civil rights has started. So I picked a community where I know nobody, I've been here for six months, and now I'm making enway in different projects, and it's time for us to take the influence. And the leaders that y'all have in our community, the reason why y'all can't get shots in our community, the reason why y'all can't penetrate our community, is because we don't really have leaders. The leaders that is coming to y'all don't represent us. We don't respect them. So it's time we put leaders back in our community, and that's what, I'm not here to be a leader. My family is back in New York, I'm going to go back home to my kids. I'm here to bring the leaders out of those in the projects, but we need to give them a stake in this community. They need to be able to buy houses, they need to be able to get their credit right. They need to, a lot of these young men will work, but they don't know how to fill out an application, and they're not going to listen to somebody that just come and try and tell them. We en masse incarceration by going in and changing the problems on our own. So that's what I'm here to do. My name is Demetrius Nix. I went to jail at fourteen for murder. I did nine years. I came home, I got caught in the streets, so I am the shooter, I am the drug dealer, I am the one that was causing the problems, and that's why they listen and they relate. And I'm here to unite all the organizations together and bring us up. Don't worry about the money. Everybody keeps saying, we got to go for money, we don't need money. We need time. And if anybody on the council would like to help us, take off your badge as a city council member, become a community member, and help us as a person- Council member, become a community member, and help us as a person of the community. Let's march on our own communities, let's not march on city halls no more, we march on our own, and we get our own to wake up, that we need to start killing ourselves, and then that'll bring down the police killing us, that'll bring down any kind of racist crimes or anything, because we are unite together, and it's time that the most precious Jew in the world, the black man and woman unite together, and that's what I'm here for. I appreciate y'all, I love y'all, thank y'all, brothers, sisters, and friends.
Thank you, Mr. Nix. Madam, if you call the next speaker.
The next speaker is Eric Nguyen.
How y'all doing? My name is Eric Nguyen, Gate City. I was here November 9th, since my time here, November 9th, that was two weeks ago. November 10th, Jaleel Baker, a nine-year-old girl, was shot in the neck in Kingston, where I was born in, I was born in Kingston Project. Y'all familiar with that? Whose district is Kingston? A nine-year-old girl, Jaleel Baker. Yesterday, after working out, I got a crook in my neck. I thought about Jaleel, I don't know what it feels like to be shot in the neck, I've been in the military. Approximately nine days after my last meeting about violence, I'm the only one seemed to come talk about violence, Carlos Moore, six-year-old, shot in his stomach, six years old, in Birmingham. A nine-year-old and a six-year-old were shot. Where was he shot? Three people were shot, one was a child, what district was that? I'm not coming here to ask for money, I've been doing this six years. Have any of y'all ever gave me any money? All, just about four of y'all gave me tickets. Has anybody gave me money? The mayor gave me money two years ago. I just spent $8,000 on a rally, I just spent $800 giving out shirts in Fairfield. I sent you a video, this warden, see, I'm passionate, because I'm talking about the six-year-old that got shot and killed, I'm not going to, I love these people up here. That's why I run, it seems like he leaves. Cedric Sparks, it hurts me that you're not supporting this movement, that the city of Birmingham is not supporting the movement to stop six-year-olds from getting shot, it hurts me. Six-year-old and a nine-year-old, Carlos Jaleel Baker. Going to give me three minutes to talk about what it takes to stop that? That's what you guys want to give me? You guys want to give me Cedric? Just, our plan, we plan. Listen, you know I support you, I don't, I don't want no fucking money, I don't want no money. Six years, how long you been a councillor in Gate City? I sent you a video, yesterday, I'm riding through Gate City, three people been murdered in Gate City, so it's kind of quiet. Three people been murdered in Gate City since September, like 9th, from Gate City. Four people, actually. I see a kid, seven years old, in your district. I sent you the video, Daryl, he had a war hoodie on. I said, hey, I caught you, he's trying to fix a bike, Cedric. I said, what's your name? Hesitates. Thinks, he has to think, he says daddy, that's his nickname, daddy, somebody, they call him, he has a lot of names, that's why he had to think. I said, who's your favorite? He didn't have to think, he said, you, he didn't even look up, he said, you. I said, who's your favorite? He said, we all related. I said, what does war mean? He didn't have to think, he said, we all related. His cousin was one of the one that was murdered from Gate City, his big cousin, the one, it's in Engle, the other two, he know, that was murdered. We couldn't stop that, a mask can't stop that, nobody was dying from COVID in Gate City, they're dying from gun violence. What it takes to stop that was, should have took place 14 years ago, when those three dudes were six, the same age as that guy. They didn't have war in Gate City 14 years ago. You guys have to support war. I'm not coming here to ask for money, I'm starting to protest, I got a bunch of kids with me, we're going downtown, we're going everywhere, and we're peacefully protesting the violence. In the, in the community where I come from, Gate City, where I spend the majority of my time, where four people been murdered, ears get shot, Journey was shot in Gate City, Kingston, where all the cameras and police is there, this officer works, I love this brother, he be there all day, he wasn't able to stop these four guys from my community being murdered, he knows their mothers. You're not going to support that? You're not interested as that, as we're interested in all the other stuff? Okay? Those are real names, Carlos Moore, Jaleel Baker, gun violence, I tell the mayor four years ago, he asked me, what does it take?
Mr. Nguyen, Mr. Nguyen, we thank you.
I'm not, am I going to get a chance to sit and talk as long as they're talking?
Your time is up, your time is up, and we do appreciate you. We appreciate you, and we appreciate your message, honestly, we do.
What do I have to do to get that time? Why you tell me? This is about violence, they had time for greenhouse, I don't even, I want to talk about this, what it takes to-
And there are opportunities that will be given. We have committee meetings where we could bring this to attention, we'll talk with that, I'll have someone to talk with you from my office. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Lily Jones.
I plan to reduce violence, you can't prison to that, to the council chair? Can I talk to you guys? Can I, can I talk to you guys? I plan to restore kids, a real concrete plan, and you're working with you, that you're showing evidence of working.
We understand you, sir, we understand you, Eric, we do. Thank you. If you will call my office, we will talk.
I come to your office every week and get tickets.
I know.
I come to your office every week and get tickets. Fuck those tickets, I want to talk-
Now, this is, now you're out, thank you.
This is for you.
Sir, if you'll take him out, thank you. Next speaker, next speaker.
My name is Lily Irvin Jones, item 16, fixing assessment in the amount of 5,583. Now, I need some money, so anybody up there can help me pay this.
Ms. Jones?
But this is what happened.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
I ask you, are you addressing an item that we have already taken action on today? Was it one of our items today, or is it a prior item? Is this an item that we've assessed for demolition?
No.
Okay.
I don't know what you did.
Okay, go ahead.
I have four lots on Jefferson Avenue, and I was trying to get people to tear the building down, I got estimates, and then a neighbor called me and said, they've torn your house down. Okay, I called Mr. Willis, and I asked him, he said, yes. I said, well, can you give me, you know, just an estimate of how much it will be? And he said, well, it'd be like 16, 1,600, and, so I said, okay, because I was giving that to my granddaughter. And I called her and I told her, I said, look, it's only 1,600 we got to pay, so I'll pay half, 800, and you pay half, and they'll turn it on over to you. The next day, Mr. Willis called me. He said, Ms. Jones, I made a mistake, it'd be 6,000. I said, 6,000? Did that down, an old raggedy house? He said, but you had a garage. I didn't have no garage, mister, you looking at the wrong house. So he checked it, and he came back with 5,583. That's still too much for me, I can't, I can't pay it. But he said they would see what, you know, I want somebody on this committee that you have some funds, that you want to help the old and the, I made it three. And I gave it to my granddaughter because I don't, when I bought that land, the man sold it to me, and, and I first let a minister rent it. After the first year, I told my son, I says, Nathaniel, your man haven't given me any rent. He said, mama, he trying to help people. That's when he's a minister, I said, okay, well, I help him on his time. But the point is, I have never gotten a penny off that land. I've always been giving, giving, giving. So I really, I tried to call some people on the council, ooh, when I called the mayor, it was like, you must be calling up in Washington DC, because you can't speak to him. Why? He gave me this number to call, well, what you going to talk about? I said, I want to talk to the mayor, not the secretary.
Ms. Jones, what was the address of the property?
3400 Jefferson Avenue.
That's what I was asking you initially, that was item number 16 that we considered earlier today on consent, and-
Why you considered it early?
Yes, ma'am, it was on our consent agenda, on page five, that's why I was asking you what was the property. We've taken action on that today.
Why? They said I could speak.
Yes, ma'am. If any councillors want to reconsider that item-
You know, that's what- Even Mr.-
And we've already torn down the property, so you're asking us then-
To help me pay it. Everybody got up here and said, I don't need no money, I don't need, I need some money. I hope y'all ain't putting this on no TV.
I see what you're asking us now, I apologize, I wasn't, I wanted to be clear on what you're asking us. I guess councillors will entertain your request, and we thank you for making that request to us.
I'm serious.
Yes, ma'am.
Any little bit of help.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
And, and for, you know, I like Mr. Willis, but for him to make that type of a mistake, please, come on now.
Yes, ma'am.
If he was a basketball player, they would have fired him.
Mr. Sparks.
I don't want it the mayor to be here.
Yes, well, we have Chief Sparks here, ma'am.
Who?
Chief Sp- Chief Sparks. And both of our chiefs, well, all of our chiefs are here, so Chief Sparks.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, Ms. Jones, I'm so sorry that the, that the costs are challenging for you, I do need to clarify something to the council, that Mr. Willis did exactly what he was supposed to do. The costs were based on the lowest bid, based on the size of the structure, and it included the title search fee, recording fees, demolition, that's where the cost comes from. So I do want to make certain that I know that our staff did a yeoman's job, but we do want to be very considerate, Ms. Jones, that it's a challenge for you, but the staff did exactly what they were supposed to do, counsel. Thank you.
Counsel, I'm not going to hold you up, but-
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
They didn't do what they were supposed to do, because he thought a garage was on the property.
I can understand.
So evidently, somebody misinformed him.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, we appreciate you, thank you.
So when will I hear anything?
Well, we're considering your request for assistance with that, and so-
Thank you.
The individual councillors want to speak back to you, they can, and they will.
Will someone speak now?
No, ma'am, we'll, we'll ask them to get their staff to reach back out to you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Next speaker.
Awida Copeland.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. That ends our list of speakers for today. At this time, I will ask any councillors if they have any communication they'd like to present to us. We'll start with you, Counsel Woods, Counsel Tate, Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Madam President, I have two announcements of boards and agencies, there are currently three vacancies on the Industrial Development Board, if you're interested in serving on that board, you can email my resume to my Chief of Staff, India Bailey. There is also two vacancies on the Southern Research Cooperative District Board, there's actually, yeah, there's two on that board as well. If you're interested in serving, you can also email my Chief of Staff. Please, for both of those, have those resumes in by Monday, December the 6th. India's email address is india.bailey@birminghamal.gov, so send your resumes in if you're interested in serving. Thank you.
Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to note that Bush Hills neighborhood will be celebrating a much anticipated kickoff of a partnership with UAB Live Health Smart Alabama, where they have brought partners to the neighborhood like Harvard International and GMC, and the neighborhood already had partnered with the city of Birmingham to get some things going, and also Birmingham City Schools. So on Thursday, there'll be a celebration of some projects that will be, be executed with the help of these new partners, and so a lot of excitement around there, and just want to say thank you to the city of Birmingham for helping with the Live, Love Your Block grant initially, and then Bold, the Bold grant, and some things that have helped Bush Hills to really elevate their community development processes. I also want to just remind the public that public hearings for the city of Birmingham's Community Development Department for the Program Year 2022 Action Plan are underway. During, during this process, the public has the opportunity to provide recommendations for the use of funds, ask questions regarding the process, and submit proposals, and this is for the HUD entitlement funds that are administered by the Community Development Department. So the next such hearing is on Thursday, December 16th. There are two meetings that day, one at 9:30 a.m., one at 5:30 p.m. And you can go online and register to participate by going to www.birminghamal.gov/community-development. And then in January, there's a Western Area Block Watch meeting that's planned, this is a telephone conference, it's planned for Monday, January 24th, that's a good ways into the future, but I, I know the Western Area has one of the strongest block watch programs, so I want to encourage people to get more involved in this initiative, and there'll be time before this date to give you more details about that meeting. Felicia Moron is the contact in the West Precinct for the Western Area Block Watch, so this is just another way that citizens can get involved in making communities safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Yes, so first things first, just wanted to say, hopefully, everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday with your family. I have one announcement, the Birmingham Public Library Board, want to remind everybody that the deadline to apply is today, at 5:00 p.m., close of business today, and so if you would like to apply, please go to birminghamal.gov/boards-and-agencies. And if you have any questions, they can all be directed to my Chief of Staff, Ms. Danielle Lee, you can email her at Danielle, D-A-N-I-E-L-L-E, dot Lee, L-E-E, at birminghamal.gov. And then I also want to just say another happy birthday to my daughter, who turned three years old yesterday, and so shout out to you, Ner.
Very sweet, happy birthday. Ms. Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President. The Planning and Zoning Committee will meet next on December 8th at 3:30 in the afternoon. We have a number of vacancies on boards and agencies, the first is the Birmingham Planning Commission, where we need, we have three vacancies on it, and the Planning Commission is divided into the Zoning Advisory Committee and the subdivision committee, but they determine who sits on which committee, so we don't control that, so it does get a little confusing. The Planning Commission meets on the first Wednesday of every month, and then those two subcommittees meet twice, I believe, twice a month. Then we also have three vacancies on the Zoning Board of Adjustment, no, we have four vacancies. One is for a registered architect, one is for a real estate broker or salesperson, one is for a building construction professional, and one is for just anybody, non-affiliated. And we really need some people for the ZBA, because they're the ones who determine whether people can do things that are not allowed in the zoning ordinance, if they have a special, yeah, a special exception, they have something, like their property is shaped like a triangle, you know, and they can't meet any of the setbacks, because then they can't build on their property, so we need- So we need some people to apply. I really don't want them all to be from my district, but they're going to all be from my district if I don't hear from anybody else's district because we need people. We, they, they actually have meetings and have a difficulty getting a quorum because they're down to so few people. We've had so many resignations. So we need, we need interested applicants. So if y'all can help, it would be good because in the past, we've had commentary made about where the people live who are on these committees. Well, if the only people who volunteer to be on a committee are from one area of town, that's where they're going to be from. There's nothing to be done about it. So we want to share the love and make sure that everybody is represented. So an architect, contractor, real estate broker, and then a average citizen. So if anybody has folks in their district that would be interested in serving, it would be excellent. And I'll just, and they do, the ZBA meets twice a month. So.
Say that again. Architect.
Architect, contractor, real estate agent or broker, and then a just regular person.
Got it.
Non-affiliated is what the ordinance calls them, non, non-affiliated. So there we are. And that's it for me. Oh, we do have one neighborhood meeting. And it is Glen Iris this coming Monday at 6:30 p.m. at St. Elias Maranite Catholic Church. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Councilor Protem.
Thank you, Madam President. North Tittysville Neighborhood Meeting will meet tomorrow evening at 5:00 p.m. at Memorial Park Recreational Center. The Public Improvements Committee will meet next Tuesday at 2:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. The Budget and Finance Committee will meet Monday, December 13th at 3:30 p.m. in the council chambers. Submissions are due on or before December 8th at noon. The Tittysville Neighborhood, so that South, North, and Woodland Park neighborhoods will have a Christmas fellowship on Thursday at 4:30 p.m. at the Tittysville Library. My office will be contributing chicken. So if any councilors want any chicken in the mayor's office, come on by. And they also will be having a parade starting at Washington K through 8 this Friday at 4:30 p.m. Hemp Hill Elementary is looking for volunteers to help with the literacy tutoring program for third graders. The interest meeting is next Wednesday, December 8th at 10 o'clock a.m. at Hemp Hill. Call my office if you have any questions or need more information. And lastly, the Arlington Historic House is presenting a Chess Kids Nation in Birmingham Public Library. They're having a chess tournament. It's actually this Saturday at Five Points West Birmingham Public Library. It's at 4812 Avenue W, Birmingham, Alabama 35208. You can register at kids, chesskidsonation.com. Contact information, call 205-441-4241. And what's very interesting is my nephew is supposed to participate. So I guess I'll be cheering him on this Saturday. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Protem. Just a few announcements from District 7. The Jones Valley Neighborhood Association meeting is canceled, so there are no Neighborhood Association meetings this week in District 7. Tonight, the Weenona High School Alumni Night will be held during the Weenona Dragons versus the Terrant Wildcats. And so we're asking all family, friends, alums, and community to come out and support the Dragons. So the JV team will play at 4:30, the girls will play at 6:30, and the varsity at 7:30. Just a reminder, councilors, that Committee of the Whole will be held tomorrow at 3:30 p.m. in the council chambers, and the agenda has been submitted to you. And so last but not least, Councilor Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. One announcement, the Sixth Avenue Sliders Line Dance and Fitness Ministry will be presenting their second annual Christmas clothing giveaway. That will occur this Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. That's being done in coordination with Jefferson County Judges. And they are giving away beautiful clothing, shoes in all sizes, men's clothing and shoes, women's clothing and shoes, children's clothing and shoes of all sizes will be available free to all Jefferson County citizens. And today is also an extremely momentous day because a person who has been hugely influential in my life and the life of many others throughout the city of Birmingham and, and elsewhere, Ms. Erlene Prince, today is her last day as a full-time employee for the city of Birmingham. She will be retired, in retirement, but will still be around. So I, I can't turn her completely loose, but she's, we wanted to recognize her. And so I want to offer a resolution, and if you'll bear with me, I'm going to read it from the dais here so that, you know, because our microphones walk you up there. So just please bear with me. I think, you know, many of the things that I could say are contained in this resolution. And thank you to Ms. Lamfor Johnson for helping us to, to get this resolution written. So Ms. Erlene, if you, if you would, please. Whereas it is the custom of this legislative body to acknowledge those individuals whose professional lives and civic endeavors serve to enhance the stature of the city of Birmingham, attendant to such concern and in full accord with its longstanding traditions, the Council of the city of Birmingham is justly proud to honor Ms. Erlene Prince, who is retiring Tuesday, November 30th, 2021, from the office of the Birmingham City Council. Ms. Prince served as the chief of staff in the office of Councilor Darrell O'Quinn, District 5. And whereas Ms. Prince has served the city of Birmingham since 2013 in various capacities, she served with loyalty, honor, and distinction, rendering faithful and conscientious service in the office of Mayor, former Mayor William A. Bell, Sr., Councilor Kimberly Rafferty Abbott, and Councilor Darrell O'Quinn. In the faithful performance of her duties and responsibilities, Erlene's ongoing efforts constantly going above and beyond the call of duty have earned her the admiration, esteem, and affection of her colleagues and the countless citizens in the neighborhoods she serves. And whereas during her tenure, Ms. Prince has served the people of District 5 with dedication and compassion, her leadership and attention to the needs of the youngest, to, to the oldest members of the community have positively touched the lives of many people. She has spearheaded many programs ranging from neighborhood cleanups, reading to students during story hour, and food drives for senior citizens and the disabled. And whereas Ms. Prince is the embodiment of the concept Symphony of Service, she demonstrated a love for country and enlisted in the United States Military in 1976. She served in the United States, States Women's Army Corps and Color Guard in Washington DC. Her commitment to service extends far beyond her role as chief of staff, answering her pastoral calling. She serves as the pastor of Pratt City Church of God, motivated by her passion and commitment to spiritual education and improving the lives of others. Outreach ministries established under her leadership benefit countless parishioners and residents. And whereas this chapter of her life closes as, and she embarks upon new endeavors, may the quality of her service and work ethic continue to serve as an example for others to emulate. She leaves behind more than mere bricks and mortar. She leaves behind an immeasurable legacy which will serve to inspire others. Now therefore be resolved that the city, that the Council of the city of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, pauses in its deliberation to extend highest commendations to Ms. Erlene Prince in appreciation of her admirable servant leadership and accomplishments, presented this 30th day of November 2021 at the recommendation of Councilor Dr. Darrell B. O'Quinn. Move, move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Ms. Erlene, we're gonna let you go ahead and speak.
Okay.
And while she's doing that, be I O the role video, please.
There are some pictures that are moving showing us. Thank you.
I am indeed a crybaby, but I'm gonna try to be a big girl today, since I am 70 years old. Not 70, but 70. I, I asked the chief, my chief, not to do anything. I say, unless you just say I'm the greatest chief of staff, then don't say anything else. But it has been my esteemed honor and privilege to work with a team of folk who believe in servant hood. I, yesterday, Ms. Bonnie, when she was helping me, holding the door last night as I was carrying out my boxes, and she said, where are you taking these boxes? And I said, this is my stuff. I've been here so long. I said, I told you this morning I was leaving. Tomorrow's my last day. She said, but you say that every day. So how was I supposed to believe you? And so I said, well, Ms. Bonnie, tomorrow is gonna be my last day. I want to say a lot of things, but I have to be brief, even though I'm a Gemini, which means I'm quite loquacious.
Let's hear it for the Gemini.
I know, that's right. Yeah, counselor. And Counselor Abbott, a special thank you to you for recommending me.
To him.
To him. I appreciate that. I really do. It's difficult to, to be a servant. It is. It's usually a very thankless job. But every time I, I do it, which is every day, I'm truly blessed. I am. I want to thank my dear friend, our mayor, Randall Woodfin, who always has an open door for me to express myself freely. I'd like to thank former chief of operations, now the financial director officer, Kevin Moore, who always has been right there for me and for District 5. And for anyone who has asked for his assistance, his guidance, his leadership, and his thoroughness, his ability to work with people. And he says, Ms. Erlene, it's teamwork. And that's what I want to say today. It's teamwork. You cannot expect the city council to do everything to fix this city. You cannot expect the mayor to do everything to fix this city. You must depend on you. The people are the city. And we must do what we have to do to make Birmingham the magic city that it is. I thank you. I want to leave you with two things. One, the Mica mandate. If memory serves me correctly, it is found in the Book of the Prophet Mica, Chapter 6, verse 8. And it is a balance of actions that you're going to have to take during your walk as mayor and as councilors and as citizens of this wonderful city. And it says, what does the Lord require of you? To act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God. Not my God, but your God, whomever he or she may be. That's what you must do for the city of Birmingham during your spiritual and political struggles. You must do that. And in closing, I love this man, and if you hurt him, I'll be back. I'll be back. In fact, he says, he never asked me to work part-time. He just told me I was. And so, you know, I'm a good soldier. I follow instructions. But this man loves the city of Birmingham. He loves his district. He loves what he does. But mayor, he loves you and the city. He loves his job, and he wants to help make Birmingham better. I want to help him too. And I know that all of you do. And my last thing that I want to say, since everyone in the building thinks I speak five languages, I don't. I speak close to that, but I don't. But I want to say this to you. I putad mes ami. Daka diya tabaniz. Scripture says, if you speak a foreign language, you, there must be a translator, or it has not benefited the people. So permit me to translate. I'll see you later, my friends. God bless you. Amen?
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Councilors, I don't know if y'all have anything you'd like to say to Ms. Prince. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Ms. Erlene. I want to thank you on behalf of District 2. I know that before you were serving the citizens of District 5, well, you've served in a lot of capacities in this building, but most recently before 5 was 2. So on behalf of, of District 2 and the citizens of District 2, I want to say thank you for your work. It was very enjoyable, as I was a neighborhood president, getting to work with you. And I think that everybody knows the diligence in which you worked to help the citizens out, which I was able to experience firsthand as a neighborhood president. And so from a personal thank you also from the, from our district, thank you very much for your humbled service to the city.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Ms. Abbott?
Well, District 3 thanks you too because you helped us and you didn't even work for us. So Erlene is the, I mean, it takes a unique lady to recognize a unique man because Ms. Erlene is unique. She was the best gatekeeper. The mayor doesn't know this, but when she, she commanded the reception area, nobody got in that wasn't supposed to get in. She might have shoved some people in who needed to go in, but she did not let any of those bad people in. She was so funny. But we have had, we have had a good time. Now, that's one thing. Erlene knows how to have a good time. She can smile through almost anything. Even, even her mother's funeral, she smiled through it. And that, that's, that's hard to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Well, Ms. Prince, I'm sad. I'm happy for you, but I'm sad we didn't have longer to spend on the hall together. But I'm glad I have your phone number. And I really love that you remind, that I remind you of my mother, and so you remind me of my mother, which, you know, sometimes I need to be reminded. But I just want to thank you. But I just want to thank you for the service and the example of tireless and beyond the call of duty service. I know the residents of Druid Hills really appreciate you, and so I'm just going to speak on their behalf a little bit and say thank you. But we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
So October 25th was a very big day for me, and I tried to make sure that, you know, I had all the closest people standing with me on that day because it was a very important one. One person who was not able to attend was my grandmother because she is no longer with us. I lost her in 2014. But you gave me the greatest gift by letting me know that you went to high school with her, that you knew her, and that she was one of your friends. And that was just, I don't know, a testament to the, the great woman that she was, but then it also showed me how cool you were, because I know my mom, my grandmama, she was lit, like, she was cool. And so for her to be friends with you, that was like, aye, Ms. Earlene, she aye with me. And so I just want to say thank you. I, just like Councilor Clark, hate that I haven't had the opportunity to, you know, work with you longer, but like she said, we got your number, so I'm calling, I'm calling. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say to you, Earlene, that it has been such a pleasure and a joy to work with you since coming to serve on the city council. My mother passed in 2019, and shortly after I started serving here on the council, and the day before her funeral, and you know how the family goes, and we have the family hour, and it was late in the evening, and just about everybody had left, and for some reason, I just, you all have been there, if you've been there before, you just don't want to leave that last time. And so I was, I think I was in there alone. It was just me, mama, and here comes Earlene with a friend, and she just helped to make that moment just one of the saddest moments in my life, probably one of the most special. And so I thank you with your wit and your humor and your kindness. You helped to make a day that probably would be one of the saddest, one of the best. And so I thank you again, when you come down that hall, y'all, and you're here on the phone with residents and, and just assisting, it's just always a delight. And then you just have to stop in your tracks and you go, well, she's handling that business for District 5. So we thank you, I thank you, I appreciate you. And I'm really glad that Councilor Quinn has coerced you in any way he can to just work a little bit longer, just part-time. I think he said he just wasn't going to have to just work, we know people are going to still be calling you, so we appreciate the fact for the service that you've given. One time, Earlene, she also reminded me, I think she said she had the highest security clearance here in the city hall, so she reminded me that where she stood in the military. So I thank you, I do appreciate, it's just wonderful to get your flowers while you can, they're fresh enough for you to breathe them and take in their aroma. So thank you, I appreciate you. And Madam Protem, and then the mayor with.
Ms. Earlene, you know, I was thinking about what I was going to say, because I think everybody said pretty much everything, but if I had to have a living version of what loyalty stands for, I think it would be you. You are one of the best examples of one of the greatest employees you can have as a city councillor. It's not easy being a city councillor, and really, our staff members are the ones that are our first line of defense against the constituents. And you are not only loyal to Councilor O'Quinn, you're loyal to all of us. I mean, anytime we have somebody come down the hall, if you hear anything, you're like, hey, councillor, like, I heard this, like, maybe you want to do this, or hey, councillor, somebody came by, you want to call them. So I just want to say thank you for all that you have done, thank you for loving us, thank you for loving my colleague, Councilor Quinn, and I pray for the best for you, and I pray that God gives you many more years to serve our people.
Thank you. Before you go, mayor, Ms. Tate has one.
Well, Ms. Earlene, I'm not going to be the lone wolf, I just have to echo with Council Clark and Council, Councilor Moore said, we the newbies, and so I got to spend a little time with you yesterday, and so it's, it's a pleasure and an honor, and I just hate that I didn't get, you know, you, we all didn't get to spend as much time with you as the rest, but I know you on speed dial. And so leaning to you for that knowledge, and then I really love what you said, and you brought it home that everybody has an obligation in this city, the citizens, everyone, and like you said, we can't do everything, and people can't expect us, you know, to do everything. So I really love that your spirituality is just like a home run for me, and I love you, Ms. Earlene, and I look forward to breaking bread with you beyond this. Thank you.
Only because I don't have a mic is why I'm out, I'm out here, but I'm trying to figure out where to start. I will say this, I've learned in the last four years that no elected official, mayor or council, can be of service or good without competent, capable, considerate people that work for them. And I would say if there was a Cadillac version of service, right, top tier, just top-of-the-line person of style, of way of engaging the next human being, engaging an issue, and being able to do it with compassion, being able to do it with sincerity, this toughness, but softness at the exact same time is, which is kind of weird in itself, but the ability to get things done, that's Ms. Earlene. And you all should know that before I was mayor, before I was on the school board, I got a chance to spend a lot of time with Darrell O'Quinn in Crestwood North, but across all of District 5, in South Town, in Gate City, in Fountain Heights, and Druid Hills, and Central City, and Wyoming, and I'm missing areas, I got a chance to see her up close in person. I sat back quiet, and I watched. You all know how citizens interact with, with elected officials and with their staff when they have an issue, and I've never seen so much humbleness and grace and at the same time assertiveness, but the ability to respond in a person you yield every single time, y'all. I mean, every single time, and selfishly. I don't want you to leave. I have no desire for her to leave. And I know Darrell O'Quinn, Dr. Darrell O'Quinn, doesn't want her to leave either, but she's been good to the city of Birmingham, she's been good to Dr. O'Quinn, she's been good to us. And for that, in front of everybody, I want to say thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate everything. Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn, thank you, Ms. Prince. All right. Thank you very much, we're excited. Thank you all, thank you, a great day, thank you. Mr. Williams, want to help us out?
Sure.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.